At 6:00 PM, I'm calling to order this regular meeting at the City Council of the City of Banderas. All council members are present. The city administrator is present. The city secretary is present. Item two is the invocation of the pledge of allegiance. Oh yeah, it's February the 6th of 2020. Will, would you lead us in prayer?
Well, gracious and loving heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us all together this evening. We'd ask for your blessings upon the meeting this evening. We'd ask for your prayers and grace and mercy on the leaders of this great nation, both the state and here at our local level. Thank you for the weather we've had today. Ask for your blessings that everyone may make it home again safely this evening. Mostly, we'd ask for your blessings upon the meeting this evening so our leaders will make wise decisions if they impact our city. Most of all, Father, we'd like to thank you for your Son who died upon the cross for our many sins. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on, item three is visitors to be heard. We don't have anybody who's like them tonight. Item four is the consent agenda. Item A, the approval of amendments of the meeting held on January 16th, 2020. Lead makes a motion for approve. For a second, all in favor? All in favor now. Item six is presentation. Item, oops, item five is quarterly staff reports. BPW report, the update on streets, water, and infrastructure. Martin?
Hello.
Hi, Martin.
How are you all?
Everything better?
Fine? Good. January 2020. Go down with wastewater, we hired a new operator who seems to be working out. And we've completed the repairs of the 173 lift station, which is good. All we have left to do is some painting and a little bit of fence work over there and that project will be done. Drinking water's been our challenge recently. We've been working up in the ETJ off Galveston Street and I rented a hydro excavator. We need to buy a hydro excavator. Hydro excavator. We rented one for 10 days. I'll give you all an example. We did two months worth of work in 10 days. We located over 1,000 feet of water line. We found a dead end main, a broken fire hydrant, three buried valves. We found 450 feet of water line we hadn't installed that's never been used. That would've taken probably two months for us to dig by hand. We also found that there's four water lines on one road that we need to fix. So all these repairs are coming. I found the dead end main, we've already installed the valve. These repairs are vital to our system, but that machine helped us tremendously. Like I said, we had it for 10 days and we did a lot of work, so that's been good. Got the cross connected control program, working with Texas Rural Water, and we have set a date for the Texas Well Owner Network Program, which is going to be March 23rd. And that'll be a situation where people can come in, bring water samples if they want to have it tested, help to educate private well owners, public water system, et cetera. So it's a good little deal with the Texas Rural Water Association. As far as the park goes, we've begun working on the baseball field. I've got some material ordered for that and we're working on finishing the playground stuff. We're going to start building on that here in the near future, soon as I finish this water stuff. Street projects, everything's pretty much the same I've worked out. Finally finalized the deal with the insurance company for that light pole that got run over. They were a pain, but they paid up today. We've had four dogs come through the shelter, three were adopted. Any questions?
Curious about that hydro excavator.
Yes, sir.
What's the approximate cost on something like that?
Fifty to sixty thousand.
And what's the cost?
I'm sorry. I've got pricing in through probably the two biggest ones, the Vermeer and Ditchwitch. We demoed both. We had the Ditchwitch for two weeks or 10 days and the Vermeer. The Vermeer's probably a little bit better machine and we actually have a better price through Byboard on those. It's about $7,000 cheaper than the Ditchwitch, but spec wise, they both compare. And in fact, I sent some stuff to Jay. We get some financing options, et cetera.
What's the, I'm sorry, what's the cost for rental?
Two, eighteen ninety a week. So about $2,000 a week is what it costs to rent one.
Okay.
So are you looking into the used option or you're looking at brand new?
Well, we're looking at both. One of the problems with the, we prefer the new one just for the ease of maintenance, et cetera. The problem with the used ones that we've seen so far is none of them are here. They're all in Ohio and Vermont and up north. And some of those models, you know, you might find a used one that's a year old, say it's got 250, 300 hours on it. It's only $10,000 less than what it is, but it costs us four, $5,000 to upgrade it down here. And in my personal opinion, I can't see it. I might have to fly up to Ohio to look at the machine. So we wouldn't even have a look at it until they got here. So, but we haven't found anything locally here. I have looked, yes ma'am.
Thank you.
And the interlocal agreement we have with the Colorado River Authority on equipment purchases, is that an avenue that's being explored for this equipment?
Not on that type of equipment there. They're mostly infrastructure, pipe, valves, fire hydrants, different things like that.
We did go through Byboard though. All the pricing I've got is through Byboard, which is something very similar. We're a member of Byboard, so what Byboard does basically, the manufacturer sets the price and they tell Vermeer or San Antonio, you're selling it to them for this price, period. That's, and it's considerable because like the first one I priced out for an example was a thousand CFM machine. It was seventy-eight thousand dollars. When you get the Byboard price, it's sixty-seven thousand dollars. You know, just going through Byboard knocks off 10 plus thousand.
And when we have more details on this, because we've been talking about this for a while now, and again, when we have the final budget audit in from last year, we'll see how the money could be in pretty good shape and we'll come back with some solid numbers when we figure that one out.
Yeah, I've got pricing, like I said, through Vermeer and Ditchwitch and I put together, I put all that together along with, you know, they may expire, so it could change. I don't know, you know, everything they send you is good for 30 days, et cetera, but I can fully attest after the last 10 days, I mean, we did all this, went and damaged anything. We didn't tear up any lines, any phone lines, anything. And I mean, we did a lot. A lot of this line is four and five feet deep, so we're excavating holes and trenches that deep. Going right over phone lines and stuff, no big deal. So, but when, you know, we have a smaller crew now and you have a smaller crew, you gotta figure out a way to step it up and this gets it done because like by hand, it's just so slow. You know, we got a lot done. We located, located four water lines on Galveston Street, aren't even on drawings. So that's a lot of what we've run into and up there especially, when we have a problem, we're trying to shut water off, fix somebody's issue, not knowing the drawings aren't accurate and there's things in the ground we have never seen. It's tough when you gotta go up there by hand, start exploring, spend eight hours, you know, just to dig something up, just to try to find it, where this machine just speeds that up. So it can definitely pay for itself for us, especially having a small crew like we do worth everything.
Thank you, Martin.
Anything else?
Thank you, Martin.
Good guys.
Thank you. Okay, item six is presentations. Presentation by city attorney Derek Neisser on a street assessment proposal for a capital improvement plan for the city's street. Derek?
City engineer.
Yeah, I'm not the city attorney. Just the city engineer. Sometimes those engineers think we might be attorneys. Just wanted to, I guess, in your packet, we're asked by staff to put together a proposal to do a street assessment study to help develop a capital improvement plan for street maintenance for city by. And hopefully y'all have a copy of that. Basically what it entails is we go out and do a visual inspection. I think y'all got around 14.1 miles we got here from the map within the city limits, not outside of the city limits, just the city limits, and do a visual inspection to develop a sort of like a condition index. We fill out a form with questions and things that we evaluate on each street. We use that data then to kind of prioritize and then we look at things like different maintenance things such as like seal coats, which is basically where you apply a coating to waterproof and keep the moisture out of the pavement to extend the life. Overlays, you know, maybe in some heavily trafficked areas, schools or things like that where you might need to beef up the section and give you a better re-profile and give you a better riding surface. And then some of the worst streets that are, you know, have a lot of, you know, issues with base failures and pavement potholes and things like that, we'll even identify maybe some of those that might want to be rehabbed. So we'll put all that stuff together, identify all the costs. When we're doing the visual inspections too, we're also verifying with that and stuff like that to help us. We use the maps to get links and stuff, but to get good estimate, square footages on everything. We prepare estimates, we include budget estimates, we include everything from the construction to engineering or whatever other cost there may be and put that into a plan. And we'll work with staff to custom, customize that plan for the city's budget constraints may be. You know, typically when we do these kind of evaluations for a community, we'll, we'll look at a, anywhere from say like a five to 10-year plan and we'll take those costs and split them out over that period of time so that it's something, because it's something that you want to go through a cycle and then you reevaluate and then go again. So that's kind of what we proposed here. We've done it for numerous other cities similar or even larger. We've done up to like 70 miles, some communities with 70 plus miles of streets. So I guess for that, if y'all have any, I know it's probably not action, but if y'all have any questions or, yes sir.
Yeah, when you mentioned about putting a heavier surface, you know, where you have some of the large, I'm just wondering, council would have the authority, I'm speaking to the council now, to limit the school traffic to buses because I know they use 8th, 9th, and 10th street over there. If we could confine them to just one street, you know, use on that, which would be, I guess, 9th street, I think go straight through to their bus list. You know, that would save us from having to do, you know, two extra streets. Just a thought.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good point. You know, when we, when we do the assessment, you know, there's certain, based on the condition of the roadway, you know, there's some that might be having lots of rutting and stuff or, you know, water spotting or the ride might be rough. Typically, we don't recommend the overlays except for, you know, high traffic, high volume areas. And I wouldn't expect to see a lot of that, but you know, there might be some streets as we do the assessment, we might recommend that for. Now, those are a lot more expensive, so we try to, you know, that's another one of those work with the budget kind of things we would look at too. Yes, sir.
If you're given the go-ahead, how long do you expect it will take you to complete that assessment?
This wouldn't take very long. I would say, let me see, I gotta go back in there and look before I contradict myself and see if we have a schedule in here, but we ought to be able to wrap that up in a month, month and a half. If we do it quicker if we needed to. I mean, because it's really, you know, you got some time out in the field driving all the streets with a couple of personnel and then the rest of it's crunching data, putting it together. The report won't be a giant report, you know, it's just going to be pretty much recommendations and lists of what the prioritization of the streets are, how they rank, and then all the estimates and costs for each one of those individual streets. And then of course, color-coded math that shows you what we're recommending for different applications for maintenance or rehab.
Well, Derek could present this to council tomorrow, but until we can arrange the budget up for funding, it'll be next budget cycle before we can even think about starting on this.
So could we, is this something that the EDC could possibly pay for? If we ask the city administrator to present it to the EDC? It is infrastructure. It is...
The study part, I believe they could. I don't know about the actual...
Study infrastructure.
No, but the study part, we could possibly request that the city administrator present it to the EDC board? And I don't, I guess we're not taking any action on this.
Well, that would be something for another day, so.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to maybe keep that in mind.
And feel free, if you've got any more questions in the next few days, remember just holler at Derek or holler at Jay.
Yes, ma'am.
Would we be trying to do some of this work with our public works department or are you higher?
We, you know, I mean, yeah, I mean, we're gonna be, what we'd be doing is identifying the cost and how we deliver that or how it gets, you know, done, you know, I guess that's something down the road. But really what we're doing is we're giving the city, you know, just like always kind of explaining like, you know, if you have a house, you know, every so many years you gotta paint it, right? To keep it up and to keep the maintenance so that you don't have issues down the road where you're spending a bunch of money, you know, instead of replacing rotten lumber on your house, you're replacing and tearing up roadways. So we're basically, we'd be giving you the roadmap, but here's how much to do proper maintenance on your streets to bring them up to some acceptable standard, what it would cost and whether we spread that out over, like I said, whatever it is from budgetary constraints, at least you have a number that you have in your CIP that, hey, if we want to address this and take care of it, here's what, here's what it's going to cost.
Yes, ma'am.
I guess this would be directed to Jay. Did we ever establish what our streets are down by the strip mall?
Yes, we did.
And remember too, council, once we establish a CIP, which is a capital improvement project, it's easier to fund it out of our bank, our money. It's easier to move money around to fund a CIP than it is to just say, hey, we're going to go do $100,000 on streets. That's something else to consider and this is the first step in forming a CIP. Anything else for Derek?
What's going to be the next step? Is this going to...
He'll be on the 20's agenda, you'll have a chance to do your talking and doing and whatever and, you know, we'll get back with Derek and...
And I can be back again for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item B is a presentation by Dave Matt on flood early warning system update.
Okay, this isn't my computer. My computer didn't mesh, so this is a Mac, so be kind to me, I don't use Macs. Basically, this is the flood early warning system's live now, the one that you all partner with. It's the first time it's been done in Texas. State of the art, it's been done throughout the Midwest and USGS has brought it here because we are flash flood alley. I don't know how to use that mouse. Macs are a little different. So basically, we're the number two most flash flood prone place in the world behind the Himalayas. Before Harvey, it was 1978 here and they really believed for a while that Harvey was coming here. The models had it coming under San Antonio, going across Banderas County into Mexico and back out in the Gulf. At the last minute, it wobbled and went that way. So if we would've had Harvey parked here, it would've been a contact sport that day. But anyway, this is USGS, it's called INFIRM, I-N-F-R-M Flood Decision Support Toolbox. And this is where the modeling for the project is. There is going to be in-depth training for the public on the 26th at 2:00 PM up at the Co-op. We've had already training for emergency managers. Will was there, Jay was there, and you know, people from Banderas County up there learning how to use it now. Anybody can go in on this website and find it, anybody in the public and you can play around with it. So when you come in here, it's a little hard to see up on that screen, but you come into Banderas and you zoom into it and anything inside the yellow is inside the study area. And over here to the right, it shows you what it's looking at right now. It's no flooding. That's our current conditions. But you can literally manipulate it and start to say, okay, what happens if it goes 11.5 feet? What starts to flood? And you start to get an idea of what areas are going to go. This is all color-coded, the colors by the National Weather Service action amounts, which they have a key over here for. And you can see...
Would you say 11 point, what number were you referring to?
Up in the right and there, right, I'm manipulating it. There's a slide data.
Is that inches of rain? What is that?
No, that's the depth of the river.
Oh, the depth, okay.
When it's 13 feet up, what's going to start to flood? Right now, you saw we're at nothing, so you start to bring it up and you can see. You can zoom in, you can zoom out, you can go anywhere you need to go. And you could just basically, if you say, oh, the National Weather Service thinks this is going to go 17.5 feet, literally you bring it up there and start to understand not only what's going to get wet, but how deep it is. And the model was, for a model, if we got any, Derek appreciate this, the R squared value on this was 0.998, which when we were some modelers, they were like, whoa. The accuracy they've got down, they've been calibrating it, is down to about three to four inches. Now, when they give the training out here, you're going to have scientists that develop this project out there, be much more in-depth with modeling and how they went about it for anybody that wants to know. Me, I'm just a bureaucrat to showing everybody how to use it. So I'll make, they'll be out there, but as you continue to go through, you can just, you can actually just, okay, we think we're going to get 30 feet and do, you start to get it. What we did too is once they modeled this, we've got historical data of different floods and what stage they were at. And then after they modeled it, we went with the pictures and looked and it is right on. It's a living model. As we have rain events, the GS goes out and they make measurements and check it with the model and then calibrate as needed. It also in here has a different, bunch of different layers that you can get into. US, you can't see it up there, but here it's USGS stations, you can mark them, we'll show you where different weather stations are versus gauges. It can bring you weather conditions, the hydrology and some base maps where you can take it off satellite and just put streets. You can definitely manipulate this in a lot of ways. Also, there's historical data built in here from previous floods. They've actually put what previous floods look like. So any institutional data, what did 78 look like, what did 2002 look like, is locked into this system. And let's see here.
Is 15 and 16 in there?
I'm not sure if they've got 15 and 16 in there, but they probably do. If not, they can put it in. You have a long-term gauge here, so they've got a lot of data. And what they did is you can see the system here and that's, that's how far it's modeled. From anything you see with the yellow, it's modeled there. Majority of it's modeled, of course, for upstream of Banderas, Banderas then downstream down towards English Crossing. There's two USGS gauges that we have installed on the North Prong of Bruington and Carpenter Creek on the West Prong. And they are helping give me data for, and early warning systems for this project. They help not only with the modeling, but they also act as a warning system to emergency managers, hey, we just got a pulse of water just came through Bruington.
Do they have one at Tarply Crossing as well?
Tarply Crossing?
Yeah.
No, they've got them at Mophick Park, Bruington, and they've got them up at, like I said, Carpenter Creek and they have one down at English Crossing. They don't need them all the way down there because they're able to model and determine where they need them and that's where they wanted them. They want them, I know there's been some talk about putting a camera up at Ranger Crossing, not just a normal camera, this is a camera with some technology in it, with some radar built in. They also give some other warning so they don't have to put a deputy out there, somebody doesn't have to get out there. There's been talk with the county about that. Also, working with soil moisture probes that better work with this project. Also, we put a high intensity rainfall gauge up on Station C in Northwest Banderas County, which if you know anything about 78, there was, they say 36 inches of rain, but unconfirmed reports of 50 inches of rain fell there where Banderas only got a few inches. And this high intensity rainfall gauge, which is all telemetry, up to a satellite and back down, not only tells you how much rain you're getting, but how fast it's coming. Because there's a big difference if I got two inches in an hour or if I got two inches in 15 minutes, about how it's going to react. And the soil moisture is very important because if you're saturated, a four-inch rain might flood you, where if you're not saturated, then seven-inch rain may not flood you. And that's what happened in Memorial Day is we were saturated.
And in 78.
Right.
We were saturated.
Also too, you can print these maps off and an atlas was given to emergency managers with the maps all printed with different scenarios in case, you know, the internet, the electric, whatever goes down. But this can be found on your phone, you can set up alerts with it and the USGS people there and our data chief, who worked for USGS for 36 years, will be at that training. So if any, we're going to put it out there if anybody wants to go. The state liked this project so much, they gave us another grant, we're doing it in the Sabanal Basin for Utopia. And that was with all the Harvey people going out for money and we still weren't able to get it because this is a powerful tool that you all can use. You know, you got a lot of RV parks here, you got a lot of under...
Save lives.
Oh, it's going to save lives. What's cool about it is we're not going to know who it saved because we saved them. And, you know, it's going to save property too, it's going to give you a little bit more of a heads up. Another thing that they're working on with this is they're working on travel times. How fast is the water moving from one point to another? How many hours does it take to get from Medina to Banderas? And that's one of the things they're modeling and that's built into this. So this is something Banderas should be very proud of. Like I said, it's state of the art, they put a lot of emerging technology in this and they were showing off because they want to replicate it. And it's the first time in Texas and this was given by the Texas Water Development Board, the partnership with the county, the county has a lot. EDC will be in there, city, us as a political subdivision of the River Authority, USGS and the state. So you literally had the feds, the states, municipality, where the EDC or the municipality, the county and a political subdivision of the state come together for this project. So a lot of people are looking at it and it came out well.
And what time is that meeting on?
2:00. There'll be a Sabanal meeting that morning at 10:00 in Utopia, if anybody wants to go out to Utopia. I never miss a chance to get out there. But that'll be saved in Utopia and people go, well, you know, Utopia's in Banderas County. Well, Banderas County students go to school in Utopia. People in Banderas County go there and floods don't know boundaries. So, you know, we gotta work together collectively to protect and mitigate some of these events. And it's dry right now, we're coming out of severe and a moderate, we're probably going to go back in severe drought, but it'll come. It'll come.
Counsel, I'd like to urge any of you that have an opportunity, make an appointment with Dave, go out there and actually see this thing in, I'm not in action as much as, but I mean, just get a better grip of what it is because I've heard about the, you know, and I know we've put our part in and the EDC did and we're paying off our last portion this year. And I've been here for a lot of these floods and if there's any way that we can get a little more advanced warning, I think we'd all be better off for it in the terms of property loss.
Yes, you want to sit around and play what happens when Harvey getting comes, you can sit at home and play. But you'll see people that are around here, you'll see some of the areas that flood, you'll remember that's what happened. The next project not only is going to have what gets wet, how deep, but how fast. So the model's improving and we're excited about that.
You have any questions for Derek?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
That's fantastic.
I appreciate you. I appreciate you all helping.
Are you going to stick around for item C by the way?
Well, I think most of it's going to be about Derek's stuff with infrastructure. What I would say is I can get some proposals for city council about how to improve this. Y'all need a rain gauge here at Banderas. We don't have one anymore because it was up on top of the antique mall and it got too dangerous to service it. So we need to put a high intensity rainfall gauge in Banderas.
So what do we, what do we, what do we need to do to do that?
I can get your proposal from the GS and it will go in with their system.
Where would we put it at though?
Well, you would have to have someplace that one, it's unstructured, that two, it's protected. You don't want it to flood, you don't want to lose it in event. So there's just maybe we could put it at maybe the middle school or maybe even here, if we can find a place that they can put it. They have to come in and service it about every six weeks, recalibrate it and do QAQC on it.
Oh, okay.
So if you guys have any idea, maybe even your yard, we just want to keep it out apart because we don't want to, we don't want to lose it in the flood.
Right. Would you make a proposal and...
Yeah, I can get costs and everything and that's something we can probably partner with and get it done.
Great.
You all need it. Then telemetry, you can actually go right online and get alerts for how much rain is falling or what those, what those gauges are at, but you still have river gauge here, you just don't have a rain gauge.
Thanks, thank you, Dave.
Is there anything else that we're going to need other than this rain gauge?
I really want to look at some of the soil moisture and also the county is looking at that, that camera, that technology. And I know it's new technology, the GS hasn't put it out there yet, but they want to try it. So I think we can get something that normally would be very expensive, probably a lot cheaper because they want to put it here. And that would keep Will or anything, they could actually look at it and say, oh wow, look at the river. Because I don't know if you've all seen a pulse of water coming down the flood. It's, you know, it's angry.
Are you going to put that together also?
Yeah, I'll get some stuff for you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, appreciate you all, let me go in.
Thank you so much.
Very much.
Yeah, well, see you back.
Item seven is discussion of possible lifestyle following items. Item A, approval of a street closure request by James Perrodi of Eleventh Street Cowboy Bar for Eleventh Street between Cypress and Cedar Streets on Thursday, February thirteenth, twenty twenty at six PM until Sunday, February sixteenth, twenty twenty at three AM for the safety of pedestrians during the fifteenth annual Eleventh Street Cowboy Mardi Gras Celebration. Lynn?
I just make the motion to approve.
Lynn makes the motion to approve. Our second discussion?
James?
Please.
Just say thank you, sit down.
Thank you. Thank you.
One question in regards to the street closure. This year's going to be larger than last year, we already have seventeen cook teams, and we have four vendors that's going to be on the street. As last year, when I was up here, I was asking about the pre-approval of food vendors that were prior to the year, and we have same problem this year, is that food vendors have been pre-approved, and they say that they don't adhere to our street closure. I need to know, when we close the street, I'm liable for everything that goes on, cleaning it up, placement of the vendors, crowd control, and the flow. This, our fifteenth year, we've never had a problem. Last year, we had a problem with one of the food vendors, and they received a permit, a food permit, to set up in front of Miss Gines. Okay. The food vendor in that spot is in the gumbo cooker's area. So what we're asking is that, let us handle it, and it's never a problem. And the reason I say let us handle it, right now, we have seventeen food vendors, not food vendors, but gumbo vendors, they're a hundred bucks a pop, that's seventeen hundred dollars. We have five spaces for regular vendors, that's sixteen hundred bucks. But we have, normally we sell twenty-five hundred cups, sample cups of gumbo, and then in given kind, people donate extra money. That's fifty-one hundred dollars going to our nonprofit. Then on top of that, we have a fifty-fifty raffle, which averages about another thousand. So there's sixty-one hundred dollars potential, which is basically what in line for last year, that's going to go to the Pro Rodeo Association for the foundation. On top of that, we match it for all the plaques, for all the award prizes, for all the cups, everything. We put out forty-six hundred and twenty-three dollars out of my pocket to support this. That way, one hundred percent of the food vendor, the cups, the fifty-fifty raffle, the gumbo, one hundred percent goes to Janice group. We don't take a dime from it. So what I'm asking is, if we have control of it, I just need, I just need the okay to tell somebody, say, look, this, or y'all tell them, or whatever, when the street is closed, it's under control of us, or whoever has the street closed, just not us, but somewhere else, instead of having, well, we have a food vendor, then we're going to go right in the middle of your event, and that's going to create problems.
Thank you. Jill, to your knowledge, do we have any food permits that have been issued for the Mardi Gras on the other street?
I can't tell you that right now without looking, this is the first I've heard of it, so, I mean, James hasn't called me and said, hey, somebody has said this or that, so without knowing, I would not have any knowledge of that right now at this meeting.
Well, we've discussed this before.
Exactly.
Last year.
We have, but last year, Mrs. Stein gave permission to that person because that was her property, and she gave permission to them. What's happened this year, I have no idea. Like I said, first I've heard of it, so there's no way for me to know right now, I'll have to check into it and get back to you.
Rebecca?
Okay.
It's a street, it's not a problem.
Yeah, I, that's, that's what, we did have this conversation last year, and we did agree and commit to James that we would not have that problem again this year. So whoever's running the permit book needs a flag note, and if someone has been issued a permit, they need to be relocated, I would say.
Who do you know that has gotten a permit? Do you know specifically somebody has gotten one?
Diane and Anthony.
The same person from last year?
And I don't have a problem with them being on the street, I just need to move them down, out of the gumbo's area for cooking. But they need to pay, they need to pay the two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fee that's going back to the Bandera Pro Rodeo Association. And I think that's the rub. If somebody out there is a food vendor and sells forty-five hundred dollars worth of pork chops on the stick, they sure the hell can afford two-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
Or we need to move them off of Eleventh Street, they could, they need to be relocated with their permit.
Absolutely. I'm just.
She indicated that she got the permit for the whole year. She got it at the beginning of the year for the whole year. She did the same thing last year. She sets up at every big event, or every big weekend, right in front of Eleventh Street. But when we have the street closed, and we're liable for that, the cleanup and everything, and she's not willing to give back to the community, I don't think it's fair when we're liable, and last year when they left, they left a mess that we had to clean out.
Time out.
Can you ask one more?
Will, do you have, know anything about any permits?
I believe the woman has been up here already, I don't know if she's been issued a permit or not. I would also, I told James laughter, the best way to solve this problem is to get up here.
The other thing too, is she said that her permit allows her to be in front of Mary Stein's, and she pays Mary Stein a hundred dollars to set up there.
That's not her property, no.
The street's public, that's a public street.
And we're crossing the street.
To make it, to make it simple, you know, to make it simple, and it's good for everyone, and they can profit. All she needs, you know, and she said that the permit was issued, and talked to Jimmy, whoever Jimmy is up here.
Code enforcement officer.
Okay, talk to Jimmy about, so Jimmy issued it to her. So all that needs to happen, just in my eyes, is, look, we have her a spot, we wanted her to make ten thousand dollars, we don't have a problem with that. The only problem that I have is that like last year, we moved her down and said that there was going to be a donation back to the nonprofit, and that didn't happen. I paid the extra two-hundred-and-fifty dollars for her to be on it, on top of my five thousand, because I promised the boy that, Janet, that we would be up on this amount of money. So we can move them down, we'll put them in a spot, but she, you know, for Jesus Christ, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, you know, that's nothing. And if they don't want to do that, then you're right, they need to move somewhere else.
I think that because this has been discussed previously, that somehow the message didn't get through to Keely or Jimmy or whoever, and this was kind of a plan.
We're closing the street for James.
So, yes, Jill?
For the record, Jimmy does not issue vendor permits, so if she talked to Jimmy, he did not issue the permit, he has nothing to do with vendor permits, so it wasn't Jimmy. And secondly, again, like we said last year, right now, tonight, is when he's asking for the street to be closed. So what Stella said, it's very well possible that she probably came in, got a yearly permit, and nobody thought ahead to Mardi Gras being right now. So, I mean, I think it's a matter of communication, and somebody here communicating with her about what we would want her to do. And if that's the only one person that we're having a problem with, then I don't see why we can't try to work it out.
I hope so.
I agree with that.
She doesn't have a designated spot on Eleventh Street. I mean, like we said, Mary Stein doesn't own the street, so if we give control of it to James, then he can tell her where she can set up.
I just don't want the argument, you know, we've got enough issues.
And if there's any problem, they can just contact City Hall.
Especially when they say that, well, we're all receiving the permit, the city has told us we can be there. I'm saying, okay, well, I'm going to City Council tonight, so I'll bring it back up.
Yeah.
And, you know, I think the rub is, is that the fact that she doesn't want, she didn't want to do the two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar, I call it spot, but the money goes to the nonprofit. She didn't want to do that last year, and she did go write a check today for a hundred and twenty-five dollars to Jana, but Jana's for the Pro Rodeo, but she said, I don't know what to do with this because this isn't what the requirement is to be on the street. My rub is, they can be there, we don't care, but clean up after yourself. If you've got your own permit the city gave you, clean up after yourself, don't leave your mess for us to clean up.
And everybody there that's a food vendor, they're going to get a permit from you guys anyway.
They have to.
Yeah, so. The next year, Mardi Gras is February fourth, fifth, sixth, and seventh.
Well, I think we approved to close the street for Mardi Gras.
They haven't voted yet.
Thank you.
We need to vote.
Yeah, so if that Mardi Gras covered, I believe that we can cover, we'll have to work on this, as I think we've agreed that he has control of that street, that we need to vote on that. Stein doesn't own the street, and we can get you support from City Hall to help you deal with that situation.
Because if it's not cleaned up the next day, you know, the trash Nazi's going to come by and.
Then we can simply deny her.
And it's quite clean.
Is that you, is he referring to you?
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor? All in favor, and other fellows? Okay, item B, update on the RFQs received for master plan and scoring results, Derek?
The attorney?
He is the attorney, he didn't bother that. Derek?
I know.
Derek?
All right. Mayor and Council, I was one of the, I guess, scoring members on the selection committee for the master plan SOQ, and of course I received two SOQ statement of qualification, one from Gap Strategies, and the other one from Simple City Design. I scored the two firms, and you can see my score, I'm sure, hopefully y'all got my scores in your packet there. We basically evaluate them based on firm experience, qualifications, project team qualifications, understanding of the city of Bandera, the approach and methodology to developing and working through the process of developing a comprehensive master plan for the city, and then references. For each one of the firms, I called the references and did reference checks, I think Jay did as well. Unfortunately for the Simple City Design, I was unable to get reference checks and return calls. I left several voice messages with the people that were indicated on the projects, listed in their SOQ representative projects. I even followed up, tracking down emails if they weren't in there to send emails requesting opportunity for a reference check. The references we checked out of the Gap Strategies were all blowing recommendations to, as far as the job they did, and one of the questions I asked if they would, you know, rehire them for similar type work in the future, and all three answered yes. The three projects, and I looked at the projects shown for the individual consultants, Gap Strategies had three representative sample projects that were in line with what y'all are asking a consultant to do. The other firm had some that were done previously to when they were formed, I guess they're probably, I guess maybe a newly started company that might have started up in sixteen or fifteen or something like that. So some of the representative projects were prior to that, I guess while the individuals were, I guess, employed or working for other communities and things like that, doing similar things. So, I mean, that's just some of the hot points that I have for my review. I don't know if there's any, like I said, I didn't have the, haven't looked at what the rest of the scoring measures are, but I was asked to come and present my reading and scoring of the SOQ. So I guess if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
You know, I think from here, we have only two answers to our RFQs. We could ask our administrator to reach out for an RFP, to wonder both of them, I would say both of them, and compare that to what we're looking at. That may require some, some meetings with representative council, myself, Jay, somebody, because we cannot see from these RFQs, if you've read them, because we're going to have to pare the scope down to something that's going to work for Bandera. And I don't think looking at these two, the proposals, not the proposals, but the requests for qualifications that were answered, I don't think that answers those questions. It doesn't answer, because we can't look at this piece of paper and say, hey, so, this is Bandera. I mean, I know that Gap Strategies had a very comprehensive overview of the entire Hill Country, as well as Bandera, they mentioned several of our issues. But I think it'd only be fair to give Simple City the same opportunity, although they seem to be a baby firm compared to Gap Strategies, so I don't really know where council wants to go with this from here. Bryce?
So you mentioned in putting, right in here, that there's no response on the references, yet they still got four out of ten, how's that?
You know, that's my scoring, it's a subjective scoring, I'm not sure how many other, are there multiple other scorings in there? They did have references, they had projects, they listed names. Looks like they were worked, they were completed, I mean, I don't know, should have came with zero, you're saying?
Well, I'm wondering, you can refer, there's no reference, right? So I'm just wondering, as we're looking at these, and the scores aren't even close, so it probably doesn't matter in the endgame, but I'm just wondering what the criteria is for the references, and if there was no contact, then there was no referral.
Well, they wrote referrals.
I can put my name on a test, so I get points for doing that.
Well, I would suggest coming by and grabbing the RFPs, the Qs, and, mind you, P's and Q's, and giving them a read. I will say that I've read testimonial references on Simple City. Lynn and I had been to a workshop last summer, where they were the presenters of the workshop, and we really both loved what they presented, and the way their approach in the community, the way they seemed to really fit Bandera in terms of our size, and customizing what they do was really appealing. And they had been in touch with Jay a few months back, we had sent them kind of a list of some key things, just to get an idea of what their response would be in terms of approach and cost for some different items, and we never went forward with that because we were kind of had in our sights that we would want to move forward with a more comprehensive plan than that. So, I mean, I appreciate what you said about going after RFPs, just to get, to hone in on really what the scope of the project would be, and how we can tailor it to our community. And I didn't call references, I just, I read the proposals, but I'm certainly willing to add that step into my process, I just didn't score those parts on my sheet, so.
Jay, where do you suggest we go from here?
Well, I think we have two choices, and my recommendation, whether you like it or not, is I think we need to talk to both of them again. Whether we call them, go meet them, have them come here, whichever, and do a face-to-face. I scored them very close, and I'm not going to tell you which way I went, but I scored them very close, but there's a winner and a loser in anything we do like that. And then the other thing is, you know, whoever we decide, that's when we need to sit down and say, all right, here's what we need done. We don't need them to come in and say, all right, we're going to paint that side of town red, this blue, this white, this green, whatever. But identify all, everything that we're looking at, whether it be for the wastewater plant, whether it be for streets, whatever, and narrow it down, and then say, okay, now go to work. I mean, that's my opinion on it. I mean, that's my opinion on it.
And I would suggest this. Why don't you and Jill coordinate a meeting in the very near future, if possible, when each of these two candidates, since there are only two, could make a presentation to council, and then council can take it from there, and either request RFPs, or make a decision, or whatever y'all wanna do. But I think that it would vote us all well if we heard personally from a representative of both of the two candidates.
One thing I'll say, one of them identified the whole town of Fredericksburg. You know, they come to town, they went around town, and they noted in here. The other one was very small, you know, just a highlight, and some of the pictures that they give, older pictures, no longer here. Where they got them, I don't know, none of my business, but one of them showed more interest in the town, or seemed to, than the other one did. But then again, when you do the scoring, you know, it may not work out exactly like that.
Well, I think that's where we should go, folks, I think we should get them to coordinate a presentation by each of these two firms, and let us hear what they have to say, because it's really hard to judge somebody by paper. And then we'll sit down again and talk about this after that. But yeah, I mean, there's not a motion to be made, this is a discussion item, so.
I would suggest that their project manager be the one to make those presentations.
The project manager, okay.
Working with the person that you're gonna be dealing with throughout the course of the whole thing.
Good idea.
Thanks for the time you spent on that, Derek.
Thank you, Derek. Stay right there. Item C. Ideas for engineering for Senate Bill seven, funding floodplain and mitigations. He doesn't follow directions well.
I think he had to get another caller.
To get some information.
I don't have a gap in there, sorry. Yeah, I was asked to kinda give an update, I'm not sure, I guess this will be question and answers too, but kind of an update on the flood infrastructure fund. Been participating in some of their meetings that they've had over the course of the last, oh man, several months, the Water Development Board, that is. But last legislative session, a little over, well, just under eight hundred million was dedicated by the legislators to go from the rainy day fund into flood improvement type projects, or planning. And then Prop eight was approved by the voters to set up the flood infrastructure fund, with that money then went into. And then the Water Development Board was tasked with developing rules and a process for handing out low interest or no interest loans, or grants, or the combination of the two, to entities throughout the state, public entities throughout the state, in a process, you know, where they're, you know, they're all competitive, of course, and they have cycles. So, you know, where they're at in that process right now is the Water Development Board, you know, put out their, I guess, draft rules late last year. And then they've been receiving public comments on those rules. I think they had a meeting last last week, probably, to go over some of those rules and have, you know, an open meeting. They're gonna be wrapping up and adopting the rules in February, so this month. And then, they call it an inaugural funding cycle, which kinda to me means, maybe they're not gonna go through all the money at one time, they're gonna have just this inaugural cycle, and then they'll do another one. And then there's even a possibility that future legislatures could appropriate, appropriate money for program two. But the first inaugural cycle would be begin with a, they call it an abridged application. It's just kind of like, give all the nuts and bolts information for them to look at, evaluate, prioritize. And then they would, those would be due in April. Remember, these are draft rules, and these dates aren't set in stone, this is just, you know, the current data, snapshot of data. And then they would basically look at those and have invitations for top scoring projects to submit additional application, or more detailed application to be considered for funding. So, you know, basically, the plan, and I'll kinda go through a little bit, you can, you know, this stuff is readily available on the Water Development Board website. But to cut, the types of thing, just to, just to give you a flavor of the types of things you can do, you can do planning, which is like feasibility assessments, coordination and development of regional projects, obtaining regulatory approvals, or H and H studies. So that's like engineering for, for projects. And then on the construction and rehab side, you know, you can use it for retention ponds, retention ponds, drainage ditches, permeable pavement, anything that's gonna be some kind of a drainage benefit or reduce runoff flow or flooding. And then warning systems, there's another category of those, we'll thank warning systems, stream gauges, educational campaigns, crossing barriers, so there's a lot of different categories.
Isn't land acquisition?
Land acquisition is one of those, yeah, I was gonna get to, you know, they have, they have multiple categories, and that is one of them, so planning or acquisition. If you have flood areas, you can use this to acquire, you know, flood to remove, you know, if there's places that flood all the time, you know, one of the best things to do, instead of spending ten million dollars to fix the problem, you can go spend, you know, five hundred thousand dollars buying out whatever the properties that are impacted by, you know, sometimes, I'm just giving you a lopsided example, I know, but there's different categories for the funding, and each category has, you know, there's some that deal with low to moderate income areas, there's some that deal with rural, there's some that deal with the construction. So there's, there's basically five categories currently, the way the rules are written. And then, of course, they have priority points. And really, you know, if, if there's a project, they're, they're giving weight for if, if entities such as the river authority, the county, and the city, you know, if you came together and identified some kind of project that all the entities kinda signed on to, and it was something that helped the area, because, you know, a lot of drainages, like Mox said, is, you know, it's not, doesn't stop at the city limits, you know, it's bigger than that usually, unless it's some local street, or a local, localized creek or something that just affects, you know, a small area. But if you have groups that come together, that gets more points. Some of the low to moderate income stuff gives you more points. I mean, there's different thing, if you're removing structures from the floodplain, like if you're doing a project that lowers the flood elevation to where you're pulling out homes and properties from the floodplain where they, you know, won't flood under a normal hundred-year flood. So there's all kinda different scoring criteria that they use. So, you know, the first cycle is, is coming up here pretty quick, they say to that, you know, and they approve these in February, and like I said, April is when that would be. And I guess the next question is, with that out there, you know, that's statewide, now a lot of that money's probably gonna go to the Harvey areas. You know, they've been planning and working on stuff, and they got things in the mill. And then, and then another, I forgot one other thing too, is there's a local match portion too on a lot of these, where you have to, you know, there's gonna be
On a grant.
Yeah, well, different categories have different levels of local match that's required to make it happen, you know, could be twenty-five, could be fifty, or whatever, you know, percent of the project. So, you know, really until the rules get finalized, and you know those categories, these are probably pretty dang close right now to what they're gonna be. But, then you can kinda start IDing projects, and even if you are behind, where you can't get it in this cycle, like I said, it sounds like there's gonna be additional funding cycles down the road, probably, I imagine it the next year, going into twenty twenty-one, so. Yes, ma'am?
When you mentioned that permeable pavement, is that something we can potentially, in the future, couple with the street assessment plan and apply for funding to do that type of construction?
Yeah, I mean, you could, I mean, you can do permeable, permeable pavement, you know, it has different applications, I've seen it used mostly on like parking areas and things like that. I, I'm sure there is some that you can use maybe under some of these lower volume streets. But, once, the good thing about, if we do the assessment, we'll have a database that has all the numbers, square footage, and whatever like that, and if we wanna plug something in, we'd have that, or we could say, if we do this street from here to here, boom, here's the square feet, I can put a cost in for whatever, and we can, we can generate, you know, any kind of estimate we want to from the data that we have, so it'd be pretty easy to do. I think, I think, you know, like I said, one of the big things I think they're gonna be looking at is coordination, so if there's coordination opportunities, that would be a big thing to consider. But beyond that, I mean, you really, when they score these, it's gonna be competitive, because I, you know, every, everybody's gonna be putting in for these, I'm sure. Need to have something that has an impact, and lessens the impact to property or people, or safety, low water crossings, or, you know, something where you're removing homes and, and properties from the floodplain and things like that. But there are other categories, so I'm curious to see how they're gonna score those relative to, you know, some of the bigger flood mitigation, like for example, the planning stuff, do a planning study to analyze something, or a design, or an H and H model, or come up with some kind of detective early warning system, we kind of already have that, but things of that nature, yeah.
Do you have any specific, I mean, knowing our little town as well as you do, would, what do you think would be a good project, or a proposal for a project?
So many to choose from.
Yeah, I mean, I'd have to study that a little bit, or take a look at, you know, flood maps and things, and, and see where, I mean, probably there's some problem areas that y'all receive complaints from all the time, that I might not be privy to. You know, because I haven't been here for, you know, the big floods, and the big drainage, you know, yes, ma'am?
The only one that I really get a complaint about, that we have city residents living up on Rue Hill, and that's when it floods, that first street bridge is always, they can't get out.
Right.
But there, there's a new bridge there, so I don't know how we could, you know, remedy that, but I don't know of any other place in the city where, you know, the RV parks all are by the river, so they flood, but, you know, they're supposed to evacuate themselves out.
Right, and they can't do it.
Well, you know, Derek said he's not prepared to answer that tonight, so.
But I mean, I could definitely, I mean, if there's complaint areas or things, I could take a look at and get with Jay and staff and Martin, and see what some of the, you know, because I, you know, I don't think that if you're gonna, you know, you're not gonna do anything really, probably along the river. I mean, you're talking a major thing that, like I said, would involve the river authority, the county, I mean, then, you know, if there was something there, but you start looking at localized flooding and some of the creekways that go through town, you know, there's several of them, you got some, kinda some low water crossings, or there's some opportunities where people are trapped and they can't get out during, during a storm event for safety or something, like going, well, that's outside the city.
Yeah, there's not, not really any places like that.
Yeah, I was thinking of, you know, Indian Water area up there, but yeah. So I mean, but if, but that's a good example, if there's some safety areas where emergency equipment can't access a certain place, or whatever, and we can do some things like that. I mean, I could look at the complaints and take a look and, and see, you know, what that is. I mean, what, what they are, and if there's any potential potential opportunities to look at.
Our Commissioner of Precinct Three, Jack Mosley, is here. Jack, do you know of any potential future joint projects that we might engage in with the county?
No, ma'am, nothing's been discussed recently.
Have y'all even looked at any of this yet?
The ETJ, I don't think any of that's an issue. We have, we're always working on projects for water crossing on the, especially on the dirt roads that we have. But, in this part, no, ma'am.
Well, not just the ETJ, but I mean, the county, a joint, Precinct Three goes all the way up past Medina.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's a great big chunk of that river that comes down through here, so if y'all come up with anything, don't hesitate to give us a holler and and get your engineer to look at this.
Water crossings and the dirt roads is where most of our time is. And most of those are west of town, not all of them.
Anything else for Derek? Derek, thank you so much.
Thanks for that take.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, with council's permission, I'd like to take number J, review of applications and appointment of seats for the Planning and Zoning Commission, and move that up before item D, which is the recommendation for planning and zoning for their candidate, so kinda got those out of whack, so let's move item J, review of the applications. We have two, we have Jared Wilcox and Darcy Hasty. I don't think I've had a chance to look at those yet.
I have.
We ready to move on?
Yeah, I am.
Okay. Item D, recommendation for planning and zoning for appointment of member for the seat on the board, and their recommendation is here in your packet. And I think three or four of us were there, so. Okay, Rebecca?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Planning and Zoning, Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation and appoint Jared Wilcox. I'll send it P and Z.
Okay, Lynn seconds, discussion? All in favor?
Discussion? Jared, Patricia, anyone?
Well, it's discussion for the council, it's not discussion for them.
Well, thanks.
Thank you. But I do, I do wanna say one thing, I, I know that Darcy Hasty, you know, did file an application as well, but I know that she's also wanting to sit on another board, and so I think she was an excellent application for the planning and zoning as well. Thank you. Okay, so we've had to vote. Okay, item F?
Oh, did we vote?
Yeah, we voted.
Okay. Well, then you said any discussion, and then there was discussion, so I was, I'm sorry, I was confused. We voted, okay.
Did Jerry vote? I didn't see his hand, yes, okay.
He finally did, that's why I was pausing, it's like
Okay, well, I didn't ever saw his hand.
Alright, we all good?
Congratulations.
Okay. Congratulations and live long, Jared. Okay, item F? Is approval of a revised contract with the Texas Department of Public Safety for the purpose of complying and implementing Chapter 706 of the Transportation Code for the ethical court. I make the motion that we move forward with that. Lynn makes a motion to approve. To approve the contract. Jerry seconds, discussion? I had a chance to visit. But he understands it, okay, all in favor? All in favor, not opposed? Moving right along. Item G, approval of fee schedule change for bulk water and adding the sale of reclaimed water to the fee schedule.
What this means is, we're gonna sell our affluent water from the wastewater plant instead of bulk water, which is potable drinking water. We don't have a huge demand for it right now, but there has been some contractors' approaches, that they fixed to start a pretty large project through town, and they're very interested in buying it, so we needed to set a price, and I'd like to recommend two fifty a thousand, with maybe a twenty-dollar contract price also. And that way we can save a lot of our potable water and don't have to worry about checking on fire hydrant meters, and somebody stealing them, things like that. And then we'll be filling up at the plant.
Hang on. Rebecca, go ahead, I'm sorry, Rebecca?
I was just gonna make a motion to approve.
Jared, second?
Go ahead.
Jerry seconds, discussion? Lynn?
We've always exempted the county road crews from this, is that still gonna be the rule?
Jay?
Yes, we may have to charge them a dollar a million or some, I mean, a penny a million, or something like that. Legally, we can't give it away. So we have to set a price, so say, you know, or a penny a year, whatever, you know, council decides they wanna come up with on something like that.
Do we need to make that part of our motion?
Not yet. I would recommend we don't do it yet until we get everything set up and ready to go with that.
Okay, make it part of the pricing, is that what you're?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just to help me understand, why would we exempt them? I'm truly just asking.
In agreement between the two. They, I mean, they do, they don't use a whole lot of water, but that's, and Jack may know, that's about the only place they can get without pouring it out of river stream.
Darren, when it's drought time, they, the state cuts off our permits. We have to have a permit for any place to use our water, on creeks and rivers. Technically, we're not allowed to go onto private property and pull out water. Although I had that go onto my place, because they're working on piece of valid road. But we, I know we, they, they do go down and get it, but we cannot get water anywhere else. And a lot of our dirt roads, that one time we need water before you went dirt roads. And this is a long way away from Medina or other places, so. We, we do use it, but not as often as we used to.
Right.
There is a cost involved in us supplying that water, correct?
There is, it's a, it's a small cost, to be honest. There is, it's a, it's a small cost, to be honest, and on reclaimed water, the cities that are selling it, and I've got, you know, I'll go Curville, $0.65 a thousand, for example, that's piped to different areas, Bernie, they're $450,000 with the $250 deposits, Hondo, they don't sell it, Halotas, they don't have the system, Uvalde, it's $20 per thousand, but, and when I was talking to the gentleman from Uvalde, he said, "We want the water ourselves to water our property." So, they don't necessarily advertise selling it, and, and I'm not saying we should go into reclaim business and, you know, have signs up and banners up and all that, that, hey, come get your reclaimed here, but this is a good way to save our potable water, is the main thing.
I don't want to beat a dead horse, but the county does allow us to be in this building without charging us any kind of fee to be in the building.
I wouldn't say there's a lease, there's a grant.
A dollar, a dollar.
Lynn has the floor, Lynn?
All of us city residents wear two hats, I mean, we're county and city, why would we want to impose an extra expense on the county which would in turn, you know, reflect in our tax, taxes as county taxpayers, I mean, it just doesn't make sense.
If I might recommend to Rebecca, she amended her motion to reflect that the reclaimed water should be sold, or whatever, at $2.50 per thousand gallons with no charge to the county, which is what our-
Without amending my motion, can we just leave that as an administrative duty?
Council has to set fees, sorry.
Okay, well, he, Jay wasn't sure what he wanted to set for the county, he asked us to wait so he can bring it back to council when he's prepared for that stuff.
Then we should table this item.
If I can, just an example, last year, 567,900 gallons of reclaim was used, so at $2.50, you know, a thousand, that's not a lot of money, basically covered the cost probably to pump it in there, and we've put in a fill stand that they'll have to use now because it's against the law to drop a hose into some of our tanks to pump out of. So, there is a little bit of, we got a peas' big brother, the state, to make this, but, I mean, if y'all would like to set a price now, I'm going to recommend a penny a million. Or we don't have to get a change back.
Reading this-
We have administrative check, I wonder if it writes it.
Approval of fee schedule change for bulk water, which means we have to create a fee, and adding the sale of reclaimed water to the fee schedule, so.
Okay.
Ma'am?
How about let Jay work it out, put it down, and let's redo this next meeting? Can I make a motion to table this item?
She's already got a motion on the table. Since there's a motion and a second on the table, we've had discussion, we're going to have to vote, we can vote to not pass the motion at this point, and then there can be a second motion to table it until the next meeting, so-
Can I just have one second?
Rebecca, go ahead, yes, we want to revise your motion, yes, ma'am.
Okay. No, re, but, I'm going to amend my motion and restate it as follows, that the city council approve adding a fee of reclaimed water to our fee schedule, that fee is set at $2.50 per thousand gallons, with the exception of county use being set at one penny per million gallons.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Lynn. Did you second the first one, or does-
Well, Jerry has already seconded, do you want to second that motion, Jerry?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, discussion on the new motion before council.
Is that satisfactory?
All in favor? All in favor and none opposed, okay, we've got that done. Okay, item H, update on progress of changes to the Mandar Economic Development Corporation policies and procedures, Tony?
Hi, evening. Hi, Tony. So, first of all, I'd like to introduce our new admin, that we had a special meeting last Thursday, and hired Megan Lamb to be our administrator. She's here this evening to, to go from the skillet into the fire, I suppose. So, we, as a board, have been working very well with the mayor and the city secretary, as well as the rest of the city staff to get us through this transition of not having an admin. We had an official Mandar EDC email account that's on our website, I built one for the EDC chair, both of those are set with passwords, where the passwords are in the safe now, those are, we deem those as the official EDC email account, so that when future EDCs happen, they have email trails and email history, and they have the password, so we will transition those, those will be the official emails. We've also changed the QuickBooks, we have a monthly feed for our quick, online QuickBooks, and that password is in the safe as well, Jill has helped me with all of that, and we will be, I will be working with Megan to get all the latest updates and reports and reconciliations together over the coming weeks. We purchased a fireproof file cabinet, which is lockable, and with the help of Councilman Clark, thank you very much, we were able to pick that up, and, or he was able to go pick that up in San Antonio and deliver it here, and we haven't really put that much in it, we've got some things in there, like our laptop and some of our deeds of the property that we own, but we will be working to transition our files from the open file cabinet in the hallway into that, and the city staff has come up with a sign-in sheet on anybody that reviews the files, they sign in, sign out, and that nobody removes the files except for EDC because we don't have, we don't have offices here, so we will have to take those off premises, and we will work those to get them back as soon as possible, but if anybody has anything that they need to know, that they can certainly contact us, and we can answer any questions as soon as we can. And the, let's see, where am I set all of that? We have some projects underway regarding the overall, we've done a lot the last three years, as y'all know, we've changed a lot of things, we have a new, new procedure manual, we were doing a lot of incentives and stuff, and so we, as a board, have been fairly steady, we haven't had a lot of transition, and so we are very aware that when future, future generations of EDC come on, they might not have the history and the discussions that we've had. So, we want to put into place something called, I'm, I'm referring to it as an EDC roadmap, but it's something that basically references and kind of gives us some analytical data about what we've done with what properties, and it'll be by address, and it'll be, have the person's name that we contracted with, and so it'll be a one-go-to place. I know that, that the files, the files are supposed to be supporting documentation because the minutes are really our, our actual, what we did and who we gave it to and all that, and the supporting documentation is anything outside of that, so when you look at a file, you don't really get a full picture of what has happened and decisions that it have made, you have to rely on the minutes, and that's not always really all that easy, and so for the, for efficiency purposes, we've, it, it doesn't really make much sense to go back to the files, print all of those papers, and, you know, to spend all that time to get all of that up to work, so we're going to start with this roadmap sort of thing, so that all that information is in one place, and then we, then we will be going to our files and organizing them and making sure that they do have the supporting documentation as a roadmap, mentions, and that, and that, then we will be scanning them and backing them up. And Jill created a drive on the local city file system for the EDC, and we will be working with her on how to, because that gets backed up on a regular basis, because when we took over the EDC, there was a lot of CDs exchanged, a lot of hard paper copies and stuff, there's a lot of things that we, you know, there were, there were things that we learned really the hard way, and we got really organized with, with our stuff, and with us being so consistent the last three years, we've been able to maintain that, but with this transition and, and some different things happening, we really want to make sure that we're able to pass better quality on to the next future EDC. The other thing that that roadmap will be able to do is it'll really be able to look at a whole of what, what money we've spent where, and what successes we've had, and I think that that, I think that'll be a good thing in the long run. Last meeting, we completed our discussion on the incentives, as y'all know, we had revamped the incentives a few months ago to create an overall mission statement, and then we had an intent, an actual intention for each incentive that we did, so that future boards could read that mission and read that incentive, and then look at the application and say, does this, does this meet the intent of this incentive from an economic development standpoint? And we completed all that, and y'all had gotten a copy of the outstanding items that we needed to discuss, so we did, we did a lot of good discussion last week, so the future meetings, we're going to be discussing our bylaws and our processes and procedures, which is good timing now that we have our admin in place, she can certainly help us with that. And the other piece to that is, I, I think in, in our board's discussion last month, we are all, I believe that we're all in agreement that if the state allows our EDC to do certain things, that that should be in our bylaws. Now, whether or not we choose for our community to do that, we believe that that should be something that you define at a budget level, or at a master plan level, or whatever, but you, but you're, when you hand things over to future EDCs and you're giving it as a manual, you really want them to know, these, this is your capability, because if, if your town struggles and your, your community struggles in the future, and they're relying on these bylaws that are written, and they're not going back to the state or the, or the whatever to look and see what they can and can't do, and they don't realize that there's a solution, an option for them, which may not have ever come up before, that they can use that. So, as far as bylaws go, we, we believe that, and we're still going to look at it just to make sure, and I know that there's been some recent changes, that we are going to also wait to change our, our manuals when the 2020 census came out, because we have a lot of data in front of our, like, our doing business in the city of Mandar, we have a lot of data based on the 2010 census, so, again, for cost efficiency, we're going to update all that at one time, so that we can get current census data and current information and update all of that in the beginning of our, of our book. But when it comes to processes and procedures, I think where we really lack is a true vision of where we want to go together. I think y'all are making great strides as far as the master plan goes, I know that that's been something that I have mentioned for years, people get tired of me saying, "Where's our master plan?", because I think during budget time is when we need to come up and say, "These are the projects we're going to be focusing on this year, next year, the next 10 years," and that's the amount of money that we work together on, on city projects, because we have allocated $25,000 in city parks and $25,000 for city for as long as I've been on the board, on the EDC board, and that money has not always been requested and used, so, so that we're definitely looking forward to joining in partnership for some of that, but we believe that that should be a part of the budgeting process, and, and more, more workshops on when the master plan comes to be, and so that we allocate the right amount of money for that, and still maintain the incentive projects that work for us, that actually truly are focused on economic development of our community with the things that are allowed for us to do. But again, we need a whole plan, we need, we need a plan on where to go. We bought some property, for example, there was a lot of different discussion, we got that property for a really good price, I think we're all glad we bought it, but it's, there's been a lot of discussion on what the use of that property would be, but there was a lot of, a lot of opportunity there, and there's still, we could still do that, we can still purchase property, I mean, if we want to focus on our business area, our, you know, buying a property that, you know, along our Main Street, our business district and stuff, those are things that we can do together to do that. But again, huffles back to the master plan, so I won't beat that dead horse anymore. The EDC in the next two meetings, like I said, we will be reviewing our bylaws and our processes and procedures, at that point, we will come back, and I'm hoping to have that done by, by the April meeting, because April 6th, I believe, is the meeting that the mayor has asked me to give our annual report, and so hopefully, we will have a packet of recommendations of things that we would like for y'all to approve for the changes on, on our process, procedures, incentives, and bylaws.
Could I?
Go ahead.
I don't really interrupt you, but at this point, I think it's pertinent, would you be prepared before that April date to have a workshop with council so we can discuss it before we get to the actual meeting?
Maybe, you know, we only meet once a month, so I, it just, so February is coming up pretty quick, and, or our February meeting is coming up pretty quick, and so, and then we'll just have March, so if we do bylaws in one and procedures in the other, and then, so, maybe.
Well, if you talk about it when you get there.
Yeah, I guess, I guess the thing is, if we could, that would be great, otherwise, I can just give you the packet and then we can, I don't expect y'all to approve it that night, you know, but y'all, it can definitely be something that we need to discuss, but yeah, we can, we can try to make that happen.
I don't want to, but, carry on.
Yeah, good, no, that's good. And then, I'm already ahead of myself, I'll talk about the budget time, and then, you know, like I said, we're really looking forward to having a long-term plan, which to this point really hasn't existed, and at budget time, we can work on a long-term goal and support any projects that we are legally allowed on the EDC, and we're going to be prepared to do the meeting, or do the report on April 6th, and then as needed after that, I think you mentioned quarterly or even monthly, so yeah, we're, we can do that, however, whatever y'all decide.
Yeah, I think quarterly would do. Come in.
So, the, so the list of eight to 10 things that we went down, and you said that you were working on, this is an update on the progress of the changes in the policies and procedures, are those, is that still happening, or is that-
So, those were specific to incentives, this, this little requirement to consider, that one?
Some of them are, some of them are.
So, yeah, that was, we went through those in detail in our last meeting, and kind of come up with a consensus on where we wanted to go with that, and I'm going to incorporate that into the packet that I've sent to y'all to approve, we haven't gotten into the bylaws or the policies and procedures yet.
Tony, before you get to the bylaws, or when you get to the bylaws, no, not the bylaws, your, your roadmap, your, your bylaws, I'm going to ask you, please, get your attorney involved, because we can't rewrite 501 through 505 of the local government code without some legal advice on it, because, you know, it's, it's written by the legislature and they don't speak English, so just-
Right, no, we're not doing anything in a level, for sure, he's, he gets emails from me frequently, but, yeah, as far as the incentives and stuff goes, he's, he's reviewed that, where all we did was put intention behind it and mission behind it and, on that, and then we had some items on, as far as us, as far as our policies and procedures goes, about how often we want to do for a single address, how, you know, and, and what does established business mean, you know, what does, what does that mean, and some definitions sort of things, and the bylaws really, I don't, I don't see us doing anything outside of the Texas Legislature, although I am going to contact him to give, give me specifics about any updates on the new stuff.
Yes, I've got a map, thank you.
Yeah, and policies and procedures are just going to be ironing out some of the other stuff, but just a little bit more on the roadmap, because we're going to start with the minutes and work backwards, and kind of put those into a sheet where we'll organize it by address, the name of the person that we entered the contract with, or who applied, and the dollar amount, you know, basically just dump all the minutes into an Excel spreadsheet, so it can be filtered and quantified, and data, you know, you can get percentages and that, hopefully look at some return on investment, and then we're going to go from there to the bank reconciliation statements on when things were paid out, and then, once we get all of that out, then we're going to go to the files and basically make sure all of the files have the supporting documentation.
Sounds like you're working in the right direction, I really appreciate it.
Counsel, any other comments?
I had a chance to attend the, their last EDC meeting, not the one where they hired the new administrator, but they, they are working towards trying to work together with the council and, and get some of the things addressed that we've been talking- and get some of the things addressed that we've been talking about.
Anything else, counsel? Okay.
Thank you, Tony.
All right, let's move on to item I. Lift or extend the 60-day moratorium placed on the Vandere Economic Development Corporation by the Vandere City Council on December 10, 2019, expiring on February 10, 2020, in accordance with the BEDC Bylaws, Section 1, Administration 1.05 Amendment of Bylaws, and V Oversight by Vandere City Council, period. Good. Rebecca.
Without action, the moratorium lifts on February 10. It expires and is over.
It expires, yes. Motion, discussion, something?
So I'm going to make a motion to extend it for another 60 days. If they do come to us before that time with the changes and we get, we're able to get a workshop in, then, you know, it can be lifted before that time. But right now, I haven't seen anything in writing and I don't really want to. There's some more discussion on the incentive programs that I think that the rest of the council also wants to discuss. I know that they, one of the things to me is.
Grand discussion, I just need a motion, thank you.
I apologize.
Okay, second?
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion, Lynn?
Well, I just think that there, I would like to see a workshop to be able to discuss further how we want to see, how the city council wants to see them move forward with some of the incentive programs. One of my biggest concerns, even though the procedures and the bylaws do say that they can spend $10,000, they've been spending over the $10,000. There's been separate applications and they've been spending $10,000 on each, which equals to $30,000. And the procedure says, and the bylaws say, no more than $10,000. So I think that's something that I would like to see addressed. And it hasn't been yet.
Rebecca.
So if I maybe can attempt to paraphrase what Lynn is saying to make sure that I understand them, if I'm wrong, please correct me. I think that Lynn doesn't want the EDC to issue multiple incentives to any one individual or business or location if they exceed $10,000.
That's right. The incentives should equal the $10,000 and that's it. Even though they have filed three different applications for whatever incentive, it should not equal more than $10,000. That's the limit, is $10,000.
Well, no, Lynn, that's how you want it to be.
No, that's what the process and procedures say and that's what the bylaws say.
Can anyone?
It's over $10,000 to ask that kind of council.
For one incentive.
Rebecca has the floor. Now, we're not here to debate the whys or the wherefores. You've expressed your opinion.
Yes, ma'am.
Rebecca, you disagree. Now you have the floor, so go ahead and if you want to discuss this without.
Well, what I do know is that this is something that's mentioned by the EDC in reviewing how they're doing things. And it is legal, it is in their bylaws. And I think we need to let them self-govern to some extent and let them come back to us. I don't want to continue to, I think in this last 60 days, and we did have a workshop that was somewhat productive in terms of hashing out some of the conflicting ideas that we all have. But things are really on the move now in the right direction. And I understood you might be coming back with a revised budget as well because there were some other items that we had seen, that you and I had reviewed. But since then, you didn't have an administrative assistant. So there was a bit of a debacle there. But letting business carry on for economic development, I think, is critical. We set it at 60 days and I think we need to let things move on. And I do feel like this process could take an extended amount of time. These are all volunteers. They don't work full-time on this. And we don't want to slow progress for the whole community over this. And I think they have the minds to get the work done and to come back to council as things progress and make the changes needed to be made. It's a large scope to revise bylaws, policies and procedures, the incentive programs, and the budget. And I just don't want to see their abilities. You know, they're an appointed board, appointed by us to do a job. And I'd like to see them be able to do it.
Thank you. Jerry was first.
Let me explain why, Phil, we need to stop these programs. EDC has spent $1,217,500 in approximately the past three years. Some of that money was well-spent on promotions and advertising, parks and various organizations that promote our city and our city needs. But $465,460, or close to half a million dollars, was given to businesses. That does not include approximately $198,000 that is committed and approved to be given to these businesses in the future. That comes to a total of $663,703, given just to businesses. For example, we gave a restaurant $3,600 for a consulting company to conduct a two-day course to train their employees. I'm surprised this business was not able to train their employees themselves. We have so many needs for basic infrastructure such as our roads and a new multimillion-dollar wastewater treatment plant, to name just a couple of our immediate needs. This past year, city taxes were increased. Yet we continue to give away money that could be put to better use. This trend will continue unless we better utilize the limited revenue that we have coming in. It's either we spend our money more conservatively or wisely, or we raise taxes. These are just some of the reasons I'm against these money giveaway programs. And I'm not sure why we're discussing lifting the moratorium on EDC spending because nothing has been accomplished. And Ms. Gibson, you voted for the moratorium. Not one thing has been accomplished since the moratorium was put in place. So why would we lift it? I was called out by Ms. Gibson at a prior city council meeting because I received some funding for my business. I received that funding before I was elected to city council.
Point of order, Mayor, we're getting way off base here. This is about the extending or lifting the 60-day moratorium.
And that's what I went into, the reasons that we're not.
We're discussing particular projects that the EDC has done and that's not what this agenda item says.
I don't believe we need to get into the history of every project that EDC has had. Jerry, if you can sum up.
I will.
Obviously, you have a point to make, but.
I do. I received that funding before I was elected to city council. She wanted to know why I was now against these spending programs. Please.
Please, it is right. Point of order. We are not on the agenda item.
But we ordered.
Okay.
Let me finish.
This is about the moratorium.
And this is about it. This is about the moratorium. The reason is that I don't agree to lift it. And I had a right to talk. So let me finish, please. I'm almost done.
I called a point of order and I wanted to address.
It's because I was not aware that the EDC funds could be used for other things such as our roads and other infrastructure programs.
Jerry? Jill? Is this on the subject? She's our.
I have two sentences left. I'd like to ask Ms. Gibson if she is for giving away the taxpayers' money because her family received.
The point of order has not been.
You're interrupting me and I don't appreciate it.
Anyone can call.
$27,000 for these incentive programs. Is there a conflict of interest?
I can just adjourn the whole meeting right here and right now if that's what you want to do. Go for it.
Now, the whole point of this agenda item is not to give a history of what's happened with council or with the EDC. It's, do we want to lift the moratorium or not?
And that's why I'm stating my reasons not to lift it.
You don't want to lift the moratorium.
That's correct.
We don't need this, Jerry. This is not the time or the place for this discussion.
You have a first and a second. You should probably call for a vote and vote for what.
I have a.
I don't.
I have a motion and a second. We'll call for a vote.
Would you please read the motion to?
The motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Rebecca made a motion.
No.
I made a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Lynn made a motion to extend the 60-day moratorium.
For a period of.
60 days. Or until, if they come to us sooner with something, then we can lift it. But right now, it would be a 60-day.
That wasn't the motion, the motion was 60 days.
60 days, okay. I'm sorry, my apologies.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second.
Send the motion for 60 days.
All in favor? Okay, Lynn and Jerry are in favor. All opposed? Bryce, Rebecca, and Lynn are opposed. So, midnight, February 10th, the 60-day moratorium will be lifted. Okay. Item eight, closed session. The city council will convene in closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, personnel to discuss the employment evaluation, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee or to hear a complaint against an officer or employee. Please quit. City Administrator Jay Corey. Jay, do you want to do this in open session or closed session?
Open's fine with me.
Okay, in that case, I won't recess the open session. We'll move right on into item eight. Okay, basically, I believe what this is, is a follow-up of this earlier. The earlier meeting, we had a closed session. I think one of the things that particular, was of particular interest was the handling of the code enforcement department. Can you give us an update on how that's going? If you've got a hand on what you think is going on there?
I think the code enforcement is doing a very good job. And I don't have a list right now of everything they've done. I mean, I can get that if you would like it. But, and Will and Jimmy both are here. But if there's a specific question about a code or whatever it might be, bring that up and we can get you an answer. But I do think that they have been going around town. They've been finding a lot of things. And we get a lot of calls from people, hey, you know, I saw this there. I saw somebody put this up or do this. And, you know, I'd like Will or Jimmy, either one, if they wanted to follow up, to agree or disagree with me, but I think they're actually doing a great job.
Okay, I think that was to, Rebecca.
Well, we're not here to, in my opinion, because you are the city administrator, I mean, I don't have a problem with anybody personally. But to discuss directives from council, ordinances that are on the books, enforcement, that's what we discuss with you, so I think you can discuss that with your staff. I don't mind talking about an issue I have, if I may. Go ahead, unless Glenn, you have something you want to get out?
Well, I have some questions about some of the things. My concerns have to do with some discussions that we had with our city attorney and I'm not sure I can talk about those in an open session. I mean, I have, I have some real concerns about the way some things are done. I'm all about, you know, equal enforcement. I'm sorry, I'm taking the floor away from you. And I don't think that's always the case. There's property over here on 11th Street that sat there. I mean, work was going on for a year or more. And we never had any veritas or any of our inspections or any of our code enforcement go in there and do anything. And now all of a sudden, you know, this property owner has all this work that's been done and everything. And to this day, veritas has still not been on that property. Why did we let that particular deal go that long? In full view, anybody that drives by could see this going on for over a year. And this man out here on the edge of town, Garrett with the longhorn, we brought him in here and made him, you know, do everything that veritas required. I don't get it.
I can't tell you why it went on for as long as it did because I honestly don't know.
I don't think, Glenn's looking for an answer from you, Suzanne. We're here to talk to the city administrator about why these things are and are not being done.
And what I was going to say was, I think that there's no problem with mentioning specifics because these things do need to be addressed. So I don't see why.
Mentioning specifics?
So Jay?
Well, when we had the previous executive session, I brought up some issues. And you and I both know that they weren't addressed because we sat in on a conference call with our city attorney and the city attorney didn't have a clue what in the hell we were talking about. And the code enforcement officer said that he had sent you information, he'd sent it to Jay. And, you know, to me, it should have been sent by Jay to the, by the city administrator onto the city attorney to find out where we were going with this.
Jay, do you want to answer that? Because I know that Sir Guppi did have all the information.
If you're referring to the same place, I think, in, they were approached, requested to come in, get their permits, and basically shut them down, is what happened. That person did come in and get their permits. Now, we cannot make them go forward and do any more work or anything like that. And we can't make them call for an inspection. And my, Jimmy?
You can't make them call for an inspection?
No, sir, I don't believe so. If they're not doing any work, we sure can't make them call for any kind of inspection.
Okay, well, my discussion with Jimmy, he said that he had pictures which he could prove that there was some plumbing work done. Well, she never had a plumbing contractor on the job until that, she didn't have one on contract, whatever, until she came just recently and got a permit on it.
That's correct.
Jimmy is not a plumbing inspector, right?
As far as I know, he's not, no, sir.
That's right. That's why we have veritas, right?
Yes.
So why is veritas not involved in it?
You'd like to answer that, Jimmy?
Sure. Veritas is involved in it. And when she's ready and wants to call for inspection, it's on her and Bureau Veritas. I don't call for the inspections because I don't know their schedules. Now, I made her go get those permits. She's come in and paid almost $600 in permits. And she's put all the work that she's proposed to do, but she says that she doesn't even think that she's going to continue on it. Now, there's a guy that stays there doing little piddly jobs for her and that's nothing that I can permit. But the things that she has done, until she does call and get her scheduled inspections, she's not going to get a COO when she does decide to complete that place until she's followed all those processes. Now, when she's ready and she's done and she's completed those tasks, she needs to call for those inspections. But that's on her to call to get those from Bureau and she knows that.
Well, again, you know, we have veritas that we pay to do our inspection and stuff. And when I asked Jimmy about it, you know, he said they hadn't been on, they haven't been over there. So, I mean, I don't know, I don't know why it went on for a year before we ever did anything. I understand people were talking about the building inspector that we had before. But that had nothing to do with this because this has been going on and on and on. I mean, dumpster loads of debris was hauled out of there, new stuff brought in, and we did nothing. You know?
So.
That's a big concern to me.
Would you address it? Do you want Jay to answer? Or I don't know where you want to go with that, Glenn.
Well, I don't know where we want to go with it anymore either, to tell you the truth. I have people bringing up problems to me. All I can do is bring them to Jay and let him do whatever with them. But they're just like, we went around and told people around town, you know, you've got this old abandoned vehicle under your carport there. You got to cover it up or close it. We've got other vehicles sitting around town right now that have been sitting there for months and they have expired registration on them. And then, right across the street from me, a man has rental property right there by us, Rebecca. And he had some renters move out and they left. us, Rebecca, and he had some renters move out, and they left a couple pieces of furniture, a little bookshelf or something there, and he set it out. Well, he got red-tagged the very next day. And, from what his wife said, that, you know, he was told, if he didn't get it off there, he'd get a citation. And, that's secondhand information, but I did see the red tag on the door. Right around the corner, there is a pile of debris that's been there, right by, close to Rebecca's house. It's been there for over two years. There was another pile of cedar posts laying right there beside, this is within two hundred feet of where this man was given a red flag. Down on the other end of the same street, there's a pile of pipes that's been laying there for months. You know, I don't have an explanation for it when people point this stuff out to me. You know, it's just very frustrating to me, you know? I know they have a tough job to do. I'm sorry, go ahead and let Lynn talk to you, Dan.
No, I, I just, I wanted to ask Jimmy, you know, all of this that Glenn's bringing up.
This is, I, point of order.
Okay.
Jimmy, all due respect, our, our agenda item is to address the city administrator about his duties.
So, Jay, why is it that Jay, that Jimmy is not red-tagging everybody that has something at the curb? Why are they just picking on one person?
I do not know that, and I don't know, and I don't believe.
Well, I wish that you would address that, Jimmy.
I will, but I, I do not believe she is.
That everybody is to be red-tagged equally.
Got that?
I heard, heard loud and clear, yes, ma'am. And that has actually been my policy, so I will reinforce that.
Thank you.
I, I don't mean to be disrespectful towards you guys in the back, I just want to be addressing Jay.
Sure, no, you're right.
Appropriately.
You're absolutely right.
Jay, when did you start working for the city?
May of eighteen, yeah.
Okay. In June of two thousand eighteen, I attended a dark skies conference in Fredericksburg. Sorry, I didn't raise my hand or be called on, may I?
Rebecca, why don't you go ahead?
At that time, I provided the city with, kind of, it's like a packet, it's like a dark sky, outdoor lighting checklist, something that would make it really simple for people, specifically coming in for permits, for, for work, to, to do work, that they would understand our outdoor lighting ordinance, and they would be able to, you know, install their outdoor lighting appropriately, in accordance with the ordinance. Today, is that information available to people when they pick up their permits?
Yes, ma'am.
When did it become available for people to pick up?
I, I don't remember.
A couple weeks ago, maybe?
No, it's been longer than that, I do know.
Okay, because last time I sat in your office, it wasn't at that point.
We did find where, it had been attached on the back of the permits, or the applications. Now, it is now moved to the front of the application, so whenever they get it, you know, it's the first thing they see. Here's what you got to do for this, here's what you have to do for this, and so on.
Trying to think of what else I could, I, I just know that there are several new businesses or new lighting fixtures that are, are out of compliance. I know that, I know that our ordinance needs a bit of tweaking, because of the new House Bill that passed last legislative session, or whatever it was, that we can't regulate the building materials. But the majority of our ordinance is in accordance with the law, and has been. And I do understand the confusion that happened since last August with the meeting with the city attorney, but now I hope that that's all cleared up, and that we're moving forward on the same page. And, I guess that's, I'm, I'm really glad to know that, that that information is available, because I've seen people spending money on lights that are not in compliance.
And, you know, if you see a light, or if anybody sees a light, you know, night, or being out, and they see something that looks out of compliance, I mean, let us know.
I believe I have.
Well, I mean, yeah, you have, but there's probably a new one out today. Not saying that for sure, but a lot of times, things get put up on weekends, when people go out and do their projects, and, you know, if, you know, they try to slide it under the radar. But we definitely will address any and all of them.
Do we know that that's actually enforceable, the dark, dark sky? Because my, through a little bit of research I've done, I thought you had to be designated already certified dark sky before you can actually enforce those. And I'd like to know where you're going to pull that info from.
Oh, sure, well, I did have this conversation with the city attorney, and I'm not going to recite it to you right now, but I'll, I will get back to you on that, for sure.
Why can't you recite it to me right now?
It has to do with, the only thing you can't do is regulate building material.
Since we're discussing.
This has, yeah.
Y'all can discuss that after the meeting tonight, we're discussing.
I told you I'd be happy to follow up with you on it.
So, I, I do have one thing that I, Jay, that I would like to see addressed, and that's some of the abandoned residents that we have throughout the city. That have been boarded up, have not been occupied for years and years, and they're just sitting there. I, I thought we did have an ordinance that, and, and Jimmy might have already sent letters to them and contacted them, and if that's been done, I'll come and talk to Jimmy about it, but I, I would like to, to see that. And then, the junk, yards with junk, spread out throughout the whole yards, I'd like to see. And, and letters might have been sent for, to those already as well, I'll get with Jimmy on that, but it seems like there's a lot of junk yards where the junk just sits there year after year after year.
Well, I know that was addressed a couple times, once when Jeff was here, and he got a group to actually go around and help clean up a bunch, get rid of some stuff. Did they get all of them? No, they didn't. And there's probably still some more out there, and probably some more growing, you know, if the truth be known, but we can definitely look into it, and find out what we can do, and move forward.
And remember, too, something about the junk yard thing. If it's six bird baths, and, and three kids' bicycles, and a swing set, unless it's a public nuisance, or a health hazard, it's yard art. So, there's a very fine line about what's one man's junk and another man's treasure, you know, so it's something we have to, to be careful of as well. Rebecca?
Jay, I'd like you to come and see this letter that I have on my iPad, please.
Rebecca, before you do that, can I bring up two more?
I.
No, that's fine, go ahead.
My battery's really low. I just, can you tell me if you wrote this letter?
Yes.
Okay, you did write that letter. Is that City Letterhead?
Yeah.
I take issue with this. So, this is a letter that Jay wrote regarding his support for the Central Appraisal District, I'm sorry, I'm looking for the title here, Mrs. Graham's. This was in, this is a letter that Jay says he wrote, and signed on City Letterhead, supporting her work that was used to, that she used to defend herself against a current complaint that's filed. And I take issue with you using your position with the city to write a personal letter of recommendation.
Okay, it wasn't just a personal letter, letter of recommendation for, I didn't know anything about a agreement, a suit, or anything like that. We worked a lot with the CAD, CAD is very helpful to us. But I did write it, I will not deny that, I did write it, and everything I wrote in there, I, I support.
Can you?
Can I be afforded to do that?
Well, I, I don't know, I don't go and write a, a letter of recommendation representing myself as the city without council approval.
But the city administrator is a representative of the city. We appointed him as the city administrator.
This is a very specific issue.
I haven't read the letter, but if he's saying that he worked closely with the CAD.
Well, then, I'm going to break up the grammar.
I'll read it.
The, the writing level, and the writing as a city representative, I take issue with also. I just would appreciate, especially over a controversial issue, that if it's, if it's as a representative.
It was written February seventh, two thousand nineteen.
Of the city.
A year ago.
That's irrelevant.
Okay.
As a representative of the city, as a position, especially where there's a complaint with the, with the state, that it'd be, that it'd be a council decision whether or not to support someone against allegations.
I want to tell you, I've written other letters, I wrote one to BEC for the help they'd done for us, and with us during, when our computers went down.
Was it in defense against a state complaint?
No, and I, that was not against a state complaint.
It was written February seventh, two thousand nineteen.
Like I say, I was not aware of any state complaints, or anything like that.
Okay. At the time the letter was written, are you aware that it was used in, as a defense?
No, ma'am, I was not.
Okay.
Glenn?
I guess that's all, I just, I feel like letters of recommendation should maybe be addressed in a specific manner.
Okay.
Or we can review that in, you know, job descriptions, or policies, or what have you.
Glenn has his hand up first.
You mentioned a while ago, Jay, about weekend work, we all know that stuff goes on, and I know this was brought up way back, and you said we were working on it, so, what's the solution?
Well, and I'm, I'm going to address that on one specific one, to make this, kind of saying, there was a person that was opening a store, we'd call it, and trying to sell things out of that store, mostly on the weekends. Believe one of the reserves, Will, that went by and actually found the store open, it was addressed and stopped. Like I said, there's other things going on that we, that gets by us, I'm sure. You know, I know a lot of people build things in their backyard, we don't see, that they should have probably come and got a permit for. But when someone sees it, and I think Will can attest to this, whether it be the reserve or one of the full-time marshals, it is brought up.
Well, I've tried to shy away from reported stuff, sometimes I see things, and I'll call Will and tell him, but, not saying Jimmy or Will ever did this, but, you know, when people come to me with complaints and stuff, like I said, I bring it to you, you know, I don't say so-and-so complained, or, and, you know, I get a lot of calls from citizens, I don't know, maybe it's because, you know, I know so many people here, and then I have to bring it up here, and then, you know, sometimes I get attitude back about what I'm saying. But, you know, I guess that's part of the job, you know, sitting here, and, I don't know, I have no problem with Jimmy or Will, you know, I've been able to go and sit down and talk to them, I don't always agree with them, you know, and I tell them, and they tell me if they don't agree with me. But, I don't know, I just think, how, how do you communicate with your, do you have staff meetings?
I don't necessarily have staff meetings, I'll go in if I have an address to be brought up to something. For Will, for example, I'll go in, sit down with Will, and talk to Will about it. Jimmy, the same thing. But, Will is Jimmy's direct supervisor, so I try to go through him first, but a lot of times, and you can ask Jimmy, I'll say, hey, Jimmy, I saw this down there, can you take a look at it, or, do you think it, is breaking any kind of rule in law, or anything like that?
Well, when you have hot topics come up and everything, do you include the mayor in this?
Sometimes I do, yes, sir.
Okay, because that's the way our, our government here is set up, that you work with the city administrator to report to the council. And if you, I think in our ordinance, it even says that the city marshal will report to the mayor on a day-to-day basis, you know?
I mean, I, I don't know that for, for sure, I have not seen that. But, if y'all want a day-to-day progress report, or something like that, that's not a problem.
Well, I guess what I'm getting at, Jay, sometimes I don't express myself real well, but I think the more communication we have between you and the departments and the mayor, and getting it to the council, you know, maybe we won't have some of these problems that we have that come up, like that situation over there on Eleventh Street, you know? Hate to keep beating that one, but that just irritates me no end. And, I'd just like to see better communication. And I'm, I'm going to do one last thing, then I'll let Jerry put his hand in. We've decided that we're, it was a decision by city council, that we're going to expand out into the ETJ with our code enforcement, as far as lighting and signs, correct?
Signs only, I believe, yes, sir.
I thought it was.
I think the lighting indicates, through cooperation with the owner, it has to be more or less voluntary at this point, the way the ordinance is, if I'm not mistaken.
My point is, I think we may need to rethink this, because I want to ask, what do you think's going to happen when the people up in Indian Waters want to have a yard sale, and they start sticking signs out? Are we going to make them pull their signs out?
We should, yes, sir. There's other ways they could advertise besides, say, putting signs out in yards. Now, you can put a sign in, if I'm having a yard sale, and I live at the middle of the block, and you live at the corner, and I get your permission, I can put a sign in your yard.
Well, I don't think that's the way it's been done. So, maybe that's another discussion we need to have, but anyway, I just wanted to bring that up, because I think it's another problem waiting to happen.
Jerry had his hand up first, Lynn, then you.
Do, do we have a process for a citizen to file a formal complaint?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
And it's on the website, and there's form they can pick up up here also.
Okay. Have you ever recommended that to any citizens? That it came to you, Glenn?
Me? I'm sorry, I was thinking something else. Yeah, I've mentioned that, have you called City Hall? And most people don't want to be bothered, but if I see that it's true what they're telling me, then I will bring it to Jay.
Well, I feel if they don't want to be bothered, then it must not be important enough to them, to go through the process to file a formal complaint, and I, this is just discussion.
Well, I thought we were here to discuss the city minister.
We are.
I didn't know.
Well, and I'm just wondering if there's, you know, I'm trying to get the whole, both sides of it, that's all. And then, also, the way, I read that letter, first of all, it was dated basically a year ago, and it sounded like a appreciation letter of somebody working close with us, cooperation between the city and county, which we've been trying to encourage, greatly encourage.
They're not the county.
They're not the county. Okay. Glenn, did you have something to say?
So, I'm going to go back to what Glenn's saying, because I do get phone calls as well, from a lot of people saying, why isn't the city doing something about that? And I suggest that they call City Hall and file a formal complaint. Is that the only way that anything will be done?
No.
If, like, I come in and I say, hey, I see this over there, are you going to address Jimmy about it not being in, you know, in compliance with our, our codes? Or am I going to have to go to Jimmy and file a formal complaint about it, for anything to get done?
If you call me, or email me, whatever, and ABC First Street has a problem, whether it be Jimmy, whether it be Martin, whatever the situation is, we're going to take a look at it and see what's wrong.
Even though, as one city council member, I can't really direct you to do anything?
No, but you can definitely let me know about a situation, and, you know, it will get passed to the appropriate person, whether it be Will, Jimmy, or, like I say, Public Works, whatever it is.
And then, the other thing is, that property on Eleventh Street that Glenn keeps referring to, have we resolved all that now? Has that all been resolved?
Yes.
As far as you know?
Well, let me, yes, ma'am. As of now, and I'll have them either agree or disagree, but as of now, everything is paid up, done, and it's up to the property owner to proceed.
Okay, so, now, I know I have discussed this with you before, that we don't have an ordinance of any kind that says that construction has to be completed, any kind of construction any kind of construction contract that says that construction has to be completed by a certain time in place, do we?
Not that I'm aware of that, ma'am.
So that would be the only thing that we could use that would encourage the, all of these businesses, the hotel, the Eleventh Street, the Longhorn, to get completed, is if we had some kind of construction contract with them saying that it had to be com... Why are you shaking your head, John?
I'm just shaking my head.
Are you saying we can't do that, or, oh, okay, so Jay?
I mean, if that's something the council would like to address, that can be done through an ordinance amendment, probably, or added an ordinance. And it may be in there, I don't know, I have not read every ordinance and every word of them, so I can't sit here and say yes or no, honestly.
So, is the, does the permit process take care of that?
I think there's an expiration date on the permit.
So if you have an expiration, is there an expiration date on the permits?
The expiration on the permit is if you haven't started the work within six months, your permit becomes null and void, and you must reapply for it. And if there's ever a six-month break while you're doing it, your stuff gets canceled.
Oh, so there has to be a six-month break?
I didn't hear that.
There has to be a six-month break during construction to void your permits, or if it's been six months and you haven't started it yet.
Okay, well then...
And we have run into that on a couple of, we're going to call them remodels, I guess, the one about here on the hill where the trailer house was there, and tore the trailer house down, but...
Oh, correct.
Yes, you know, there have been a couple of those, but as far as a length of permit or a length of time to finish a project, the only one that I'm aware of that has one is the hotel, and that's through the state's agreements.
Actually, the three eighty and the three eighty-one, which the county did not enter into, with the three eighty, the performance agreement requires a completion date, is because we extended it, if y'all will remember, because of the funds that are involved, the EDC funds that are involved. And the city has nothing in it as far as our money in the grant. Because of the EDC funds, we have a performance agreement.
To go back to the people taking a long time to complete, I did go back and speak with Mr. Garrett, who's I've gotten two approvals, he's called for an inspection of his mechanical, which is his AC, and he called for his electrical, and that's been done. And we had a good old conversation, and he's taking his sweet time with it, and he's doing a great job, and it looks really nice. So a lot of people's going to take their own time, and I can't rush them. And when he feels like getting done with the sections he wants to get done with, it's on him, as long as he's following the building codes, so...
Okay, Will.
No, go ahead, I'm not... I just wanted to address the part where people have it to finish by a certain time, I just can't do that.
I'd just like to start out with it, as far as Rebecca, I Keely had come up with an outdoor lighting information sheet, I'm sure you've seen that now?
I don't think I have, actually.
Okay, I've got two of them for you, I'll give it to you. She brought me one several weeks ago, might have been over a month ago, and I promptly lost it. Can't find it, save my life. She informed me recently that she had been including them with the commercial permit application, but couldn't force anybody to read them, and she suspected that a lot of people weren't. And I advised her that I thought it would be in her best interest to start affixing them to the front of all the applications. And while we still couldn't force anybody to read them, that that would be a much better solution. So now on the front of all of the applications for permits, there's a, it's a pretty good summary breakdown, it's common sense. Once again, does you no good at all if you don't read it. She's also supposed to be getting it put up, probably somewhere on the city website. Like I said, it's a pretty common sense, broken down, easily understood version of the ordinance, and it clearly says it's not the whole ordinance. We suggest you go to the website and read it, and, you know, maybe I'm a little revest in not getting on this, but once I got told, hey, we can't enforce this anymore, I put it to the back burner and quit worrying about it. And now that it's, that's been put up, it's back on the priority. I wouldn't put any blame on Jay on that, that's been a debacle, and it's cleared up, and I think we're moving forward on it, making good strides, and I'll provide you these. If there's something that you'd like changed, or, I hate to make it any longer because it covers the whole page. I think if we make it more than that, we're really going to cut into the ones that, ones that read it.
I appreciate the update, and I wasn't aware that it was going out now, and I'm glad that it is.
And folks, as far as Jay, you know, I've been here longer than any city employee now, and I've gotten along with every city manager that we've had. And I'd have to flip over a sheet of paper and write all their names down to tell you how many we've had in the going on seven years I've been here. And far and away, Jay's been the best one we've had. I'm not going to tell you he's perfect, but I can't really tell you anything that I disagree with him on. Morale is a hundred times better in City Hall than it's been the whole by my business. I spent forty-five minutes visiting with him in his office before I left yesterday. He comes and talks to me when there's a problem, a concern. I have no problem walking to his office and, you know, and hollering at him when I've got a concern. We've had city managers here that I couldn't get on the phone. When they left this building, they were gone. And I'm good with dealing with those problems, I don't mind that. But Glenn's brought up some stuff, and it's not ideal. I don't have any particular amount of love for the person that we're discussing, but it's been a mess. And, you know, Jimmy can explain something better than I can, probably, but at the start of the mess and after the last code enforcement officer, I went down there and looked in there, and I'm certainly not a building inspector. But when the city attorney says this is the best way to handle it, we pay that man for advice. And you ignore the city attorney's advice at your own peril. That's always been my principle. He said how to do things, that's how we've done it, ugly juice, got a handle on it. Whatever she does, however she does it, before she can open whatever she's going to do, she has to get all those inspections from BV. And then, then, and only then can she get that certificate of occupancy. And the facts are, that's not only for what she wants to do down there. She told me she will cross that bridge when she gets there, so...
Thank you, Will.
Thank you.
I'll shut up now.
I'm sorry, I was listening to Bill's phone barking, sorry. Yes, Jerry?
Yeah, I'd like to say that I probably wouldn't be saying this before I got onto City Council, but I've spent many hours now sitting with Jay discussing issues and things that we've been working on, and my attitude's changed. You know, I think you've done a great job since I've been working with you, and I appreciate the assistance. We had some positive outcomes with Tech Dot, which was our priority, and we've got some movement there. And I can see that you're working hard on things, so I appreciate that.
Anything specific, council, that, because it is getting late, we've been at this for a while, anything else that's specific? Okay, one comment I would like to make, what I would like to see, and Jay and I work really well together. He copies me on almost all of his emails that have anything to do with city business, particular meetings, and I'm invited to everything that's going on. He's done a wonderful job, in my opinion. The only thing I would like to see different is communication between Jay, his department heads, and a more of a status report, you know, just so if Rebecca calls or I call and say, hey, oh, what's up with the hotel, where are we? Not the hotel, that's not city stuff. Where are we with the baseball field? Well, you know, if you've got an email or a review that morning saying, hey, we just set second base, I don't have to be that specific, but just so we have a little more detail about the things that are being addressed and who's doing what. I don't need a daily log from anybody, don't request a daily log from anybody, that's what I'm saying. But I think, so you have the same information that they have, so that when we ask you, because theoretically, we're not supposed to ask them. So, you know, the chain of command thing, I think that's the biggest issue that we're having right now. All right, since we're not going on to item nine, y'all ready to move on to item ten, requested announcements?
Do you do?
I do, Jerry.
No, we weren't.
We never did, we're still in open session. I didn't reset. Okay? So moving on, we'll just skip number nine, because we don't have to reconvene. Number ten, requested announcements. A request by council to place items on a future agenda, we've got several going already, anything else y'all want to see? Okay. Announcements by council? Anybody, anything, Jay, Jerry?
Jay, would you mind giving a little update on the Tech Dot?
I don't know, can I do that, since it's not on the agenda?
No, this is just a...
Add it to a future agenda? No, that would be a future agenda.
Okay, I like to place it on future agenda.
Any announcements, nothing coming up, Mardi Gras is next week. Happy Valentine's Day next week, what else? Anything else? Okay, Russ, make the motion to adjourn, a second? We can set this, any discussion?
It's so much fun.
Everybody break down, all in labor?